Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, April 12th. It's 6:30 in the evening. Isn't it nice to have the sun shining upon us now that it's stopped raining? Let the record show the councilors are here except for Kathy Martin-Willis who called. Let me know she's got the flu and we are hoping that she gets better soon. We have minutes from the meeting of March 13th. Do they meet with your official O.P.D.?
I move to approve the minutes of March 13th as received.
Motion second on February 6th if I may say. Aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to have a couple of presentations here under visitor comment. Let's start with the Pope County Fire District Chief Ben Strange. Good evening, Chief. Glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Councilors. I'm here to give you some information when you get your ballot in the mail in a couple weeks here in the city. Measure 27-128 on it is the renewal of a five-year local option levy for emergency service operations. Fire District Board of Directors decided to put this on the ballot and I'm here to talk to you informationally to tell you what it's all about. Can't speak in support or opposition to this, but I do want to make sure that you kind of know what it's all about. So currently, the Fire District collects a 19 cent per thousand operating levy. This next fiscal year, we will continue to collect that. This levy would go into effect after that one concludes. It would continue the same rate of 19 cents per thousand. So if it fails, obviously that tax wouldn't be levied. If it passes, the tax will continue at the current rate. The impacts of this, I'll talk quickly about what the impacts will be if it fails and what they will be if it passes. And I also brought some letters for each one of you as well as anybody listening so they don't have to take notes. If it fails, there are two primary things that will happen. The first is we'll have to reduce some staffing. We will not lay anybody off, but during certain hours of the day when people are sick or on vacation, we won't be able to fill all of those hours through overtime or temporary staffing like we currently do. The second impact will be that we won't be able to completely fund the Fire District's equipment replacement plan. These are the big-ticket items, our air packs, radios, some of our vehicles, cardiac monitors, things that cost us a lot of money that we have to save up for year after year. I think the first thing will just be kind of dispersed throughout the budget, some training things, should be dealt with back with the city as far as kind of just having a cut here and there. So that's the impact of it fails. The main things are not being able to backfill some of those positions and not funding the equipment replacement plans. If it passes, there are three things that we will do. The first would be to fully fund the standards, the minimum standards of the equipment replacement plan. The second thing that we'll be doing would be to hire one more full-time firefighter paramedic. I'm going to explain this if it gets a little into the weeds. I assure you, it's on this letter, it'll make more sense. Currently, we have two daytime firefighter paramedics. And so we have more staffing during the day than we do at night. If we hire one more full-time employee, we can actually move those day timers at their same pay to 24-hour shifts because of the way our contract works with the union. So as a result of hiring one more, we end up with 84 more hours per week of having four firefighter paramedics on duty. So that's the second thing. And the third thing is that we would hire a part-time fire marshal. The Fire District had a part, a full-time fire marshal until 2012. That position was laid off due to budget constraints. This would allow us to hire a part-time fire marshal. So those are the three things that would happen if it passes. That's my very down and dirty what it's all about. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? You have the information in your packet tonight and thought it was pretty complete. Additional questions?
I did have a question.
Yeah.
Can you comment on the manpower versus population growth, you know, the past five, 10 years? Where we were back then and where we are now and then where we're going?
We have added some staff in the past five years. We've hired one additional person in that timeframe since 2014, I believe. In that timeframe, our poll lines increased by 42 percent. So it's been pretty significant and we've been able to add some manpower, but obviously with the population growth, that is a concern of ours. I also recommend, if you haven't been to the Fire District's webpage, read on it. There is a link on there that says documents and it takes you to several, several of the Fire District's documents. One of them is called the standard cover and some of the things that that does is identify our overlapping calls, when we were and weren't able to meet our minimum standards of what we went on seeing in that time.
Additional questions?
I do. Could you articulate a little bit the importance of having a fire marshal?
Yeah. I'm Mr. Jeff Kennings here. The Fire District is responsible for evaluating access and water supply. And even though a fire marshal works for a Fire District, typically the educational paths of firefighters and fire marshals, say maybe one or two classes, are very different. Fire marshals are really into fire code. They're actually the state fire marshals around the Oregon State Police and so codes and code enforcement. So it's, there's quite a difference in education. What we've done in the past several years is we've gotten a lot of our firefighters certified to do some basic inspections to be able to do our businesses, our merchandise, and some assembly spaces which are places that have an important amount of people. The state helps us out with educational facilities. They help us out with healthcare. Some of the other difficult facilities, some of our target hazards like manufacturing, large multifamily dwelling things, those are things that we don't have quite as much expertise in as we need. And the fire marshal would help with that as well as following up even with those basic inspections with business owners who aren't really willing to comply or don't think that they need to. It gives more consistency and enforcement of those.
Additional questions?
One more question. Who have you been using or what service have you been using for fire marshal up till now?
I've been spending a lot of my time getting educated and doing my best to keep up, especially with new construction. I've gotten to know a lot of people in the city that depend, I think, last year. And we've been relying heavily on our deputy state fire marshal, I won't go ahead, the name of Shannon Biller. Shannon's been phenomenal to work with. She comes by, she helps us out with Marquee, with all these other target hazards. She is responsible for all of Yan Hill, all of Polk, and all of Lincoln County. And she's also responsible, she takes care of Western Oregon University, all the schools. She does a phenomenal job, but obviously that's a heavy load.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
How else can we promote this so that everybody cares about it?
I think, I'm going to take the opportunity here since the chief is here as a public employee. He can't really advocate or anything like that or suggest how we can do that, but as a council member and as a person, letting people know, letters to the editor, talking to your neighbors and friends and letting them know that this is on the ballot is an election. And so I think that would, that probably would be helpful to do that. And excuse me for taking your...
Well, I appreciate the question and nonpartisan. I would say that is a difficult, that's been a challenge for me because, you know, it's hard. I'm sure you all know, you sit here in the chamber just like our board sits in our robe and you all talk about an issue for a year and it seems like everybody should know and then you go out and it seems like nobody knows about it. You're going, "This is not new." So I sort of miss that.
There are no questions? Chief, thank you very much. I know you have another engagement and so I really appreciate you taking the time to come to visit with us.
Thank you.
Really appreciate how you're getting around the community. I've noticed it and others have too and it's very much appreciated.
Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Our next presentation is Pope County Sheriff Mark Gaff, good evening, Sheriff. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to take just a few minutes and kind of recap some of the things that we've been doing at the sheriff's office that is solely a result of the public safety levy that was passed in 2015. And so part of my job is really trying to show what we do because a lot of people don't know or understand what we do. And so this is something just to grace the service of that. I don't know how to, does that just go?
And we all, we do all have, we all have it in our packet here.
So I'll just go to page three. Really what we've really focused on in the last year and a half is public engagement. We have really done prior to that and whether that's going to city council meetings, there will be watch group meetings, doing training in the schools with parents and kids and doing threat assessments and victim impact panels and really anything that is asked of us, we try to accommodate. I rarely turn anybody away if they're coming to ask for help for whatever it may be. We have the ability to do that and it's our job to do that. It's the way I'm getting it. We're supposed to serve and if I don't do that, then I'm failing. So we really have focused on that. It's not just me going out and doing these. It's a lot of my deputies go out to and I trust in them to go out and do the right thing. Some of them didn't necessarily, they didn't have experience doing it, now they do and they really enjoy it because it is really about public service. Within the sheriff's office, we have two divisions, the corrections division and patrol division. Within the corrections division, we have, our jail's 195-bed facility. It's really capable of 204 if you add a few more beds, but we have 185 beds. We typically run, last year was about 138 per day average inmates. And so compared from 2016 to now, our bookings are just up over like 3 percent compared to last year. It's about 3,000 people that have come in through the jail. The next page talks about the different agencies, how many they brought to the facility because every agency, including state police, grandchild police, everybody brings their custodies, their inmates to our jail. And then they drop off and now it's our responsibility to take care medically, get them to court, do everything that is our job and that's required to do. And so sometimes people assume that either we get paid by the cities, when they drop off an inmate, which doesn't happen, it all falls on us. And the numbers really do show, they're kind of all over the board in terms of number of arrests. For instance, my office, we were at 719 last year. That's up 66 percent of the previous year. So in 2015, it's at the stage that we were doing 10 hours a day of coverage. We were handling 24 hours worth of calls in that 10-hour window. So we were in no way, shape or form of doing any kind of proactive enforcement. It was all reactive. And so 2016, beginning of that, we went to 20 hours a day and then halfway through 2016, we went to 24 hours a day. Right now, we're full staff. In 2016, we were probably short three or four people throughout the year. And so the numbers I expect to go up, or I expected them to be up, which they are, but we were able to really be proactive in some of the things that we do instead of being reactionary. I'll talk about some of those things in a minute. Our average daily population in jail, like I said, was 138, it was actually 132. The average lived to stay for an inmate is 19 days. That's typically what we see. Out of that 132, probably 115 or so are the 19-day or less folks. The other ones are sentenced, probably up to a year, six months to a year typically. So our turnover is pretty quick. That kind of limits us, our ability in terms of doing programs and other things like that because the state is so short, we're not able to really delve into a lot of things. But some of the things we have done is bringing mental health, we have a mental health provider in our jail. Five days a week, we also have addiction services out on directly a person that works in there full-time as well. So they interact with inmates every day. Whatever kind of counseling they need, they provide it. We didn't have that before and so that started in 2016, middle of 2016. Our female population has been going up over the last few years and this year is no different. Two years ago, we were probably at 15, probably the average female population. Now we're at 33 and so that's a significant increase. I don't have, I don't have a reason for that. It's just this way, not, it's not the start of it, but it's across the state. It was like that too in other jails. In our patrol division, kind of worked out on the next page, the things that we do. Some of them are state mandated, some of them are out of necessity. Court security, jail functions, amateur radio services, hand radio operators, civil process, restraining orders, subpoenas, any kind of court documents. Those are all things that are required by statute to do and provide. And so we have a couple of folks that really just handle those things. We also have a concealed handgun license person that that's all she does at the time. And we have enough working in that room for her to stay busy. That's something else I'm mandated to do. Right now, we have 14 patrol deputies, four sergeants on patrol. So the sergeants are working sergeants. They're not sitting behind a desk or anything like that. They're out working with them. So we have 18 coaches on patrol. Comparatively, in 2015, we had six. So that's where, that's six people all together, that's what we had. And now we have 15. So we really have changed that and that's because of the levy. So in our patrol division, we have 120 volunteers throughout all our different programs. In our jail, we have 75 and those are separate volunteers that come into the jail. So we have nearly 200 volunteers that we manage and it's hard. Anybody that has volunteer organs knows it's difficult to manage volunteer employees. There really is. So we have 200 of those. I think it means a lot to me because volunteers, if we didn't have some of them, we would not really be able to do some of the things we're able to do. And so I'm glad that we have that many volunteers that want to come and help. That number's increased probably by about 40 or so over the last year and a half. So we're up a lot. Our patrol statistics, in 2017, we had $24,000 per service incidents versus the previous year was right at $20,000. That's a lot of calls for service. Some of them are very minor, some of them are pretty serious and somewhere in between. So out of those, we agree, 875 arrests out of those 24,000 calls for service and 8,000 of those are 91 calls. So those are calls that we have no distraction number, those just come in regardless. And that's up by about 1,000 from the previous year. I always get a question asked of me, you know, when we stop somebody, "What's their quota?" And that gets asked. We don't have a quota, never have, never will. That's not something that I believe in. Sometimes there's a right time to issue citations, sometimes there's a right time for education. And so if you look at our numbers, about a third of the people that we stopped, 6,100 people ever stopped, about a third of them received a citation. So it's not, that's a good number, that's just worded handy. But, you know, we did 2,000 or so, 1,500 more traffic stops in the previous year. So we're out really being proactive, finding things before they happen. You can't always prove that, but on the next page, when we talk about some of the statistics and crimes that have gone down versus crimes that have gone up, it is because we are being So this is, so this is for the sheriff's office outside of the city limits. I don't know the stats for inside of the state limits, but so this is for outside. Everything is up for us. Vess and drug, these are all drugs related in my mind. They have some drug-related access. Overall, crimes are up, you know, 64 percent from 2015. And a lot of those are self-generated, going out and finding things, not, they're not the things that we're just responding to, 911 call or something like that. You know, thefts are up, DUIs are up. I always get asked the whole marijuana component, you know, is there an increase in DUIs? And yes, there is. There's always been DUIs out there. We're just finding it because we're out there being proactive. The DUIs with the marijuana component, you know, in 2015, there was eight. This year, or last year, there was 58. So that is a significant increase in my book that we're able to find them. I believe that they've always been there, to some extent, just for able to actually capture this time. So, but you see all the other numbers, they're, they're all up across the board. Another function that we have, this is a grant-funded position through the state for a global crisis response team. And what this does, I think I've come here and talked about it before, but it consists of two teams. Each team has a police officer, a mental health professional with them. They're a car. They respond to calls when they happen, start providing services right then versus, hey, go check in, go in Monday and, you know, make an appointment. We start delivering services when that person is in crisis and that is something that is proven to be more effective when versus, you know, hey, a week, go check in with somebody and they're not, in a week, they're not in crisis anymore or might not be, they may not go get services. But when we deliver services right then, it is much more effective. The two teams, we have a team, one deputy, mental health professional, and then the sales department as the other police officer. They only do West Salem, so primarily. Both teams, we work seven days a week, we work 24 hours a day, but we have seven days a week. And sales police officers, they're in Independence, they're in Fall City, Dallas, whatever. If we're not on, if they're not on, we'll go to the city of West Salem and handle calls if there are their calls there. Last year, we handled 504 calls altogether and it breaks it down by city, so you can see where Independence fits on that and has, actually has the most calls for service for this team. And these are things that the Independence Police respond to, realize there's some kind of mental health component or nexus to it. They'll call our team, they'll come and then just start, start taking care of it. Prior to this team being here, it was about 30 percent or so of any kind of call that we responded to that had a mental health-related component, we either took it to jail, because that was the option back seven years ago, or the hospital, or leave it be and just do nothing. About 30 percent of those ended up in jail. That's just how it worked. Last year, 8 percent of the calls went to jail. So that's a significant decrease and I think, well, it is directly related to this team and their abilities to provide the services and divert people that don't need to be in jail. Sometimes they don't need to. They may have committed a crime, but do they really need to be there based on their mental health? And so that's a big reduction in my book. 30 percent of those 504 calls ended up in a mental health facility. That's either a hospital or there's, it's called PCC, it's over in Salem. That's another place where we can take folks in a crisis so immediately. So they're all, this is the great program, it really is there. We are now the pioneers of this program. Marion County started this program several, several years ago. So it's easy to copy what they were doing, making hours. And so we're on the third year of the grant. So we've repeatedly been approved for it based on our stats and just our overall responses to calls. So otherwise, they wouldn't find our position. So all of this, we got crimes up, you know, more people rode to jail, but it is because of the public safety levy. It's still leveling off and it makes it look kind of, it makes it look really bad because we had no people in 2015 and now we do. And so there is, you know, obviously it's going to be an increase because we have no people. I expect those things to level off. But the bottom line is the people that we serve, we wouldn't be able to serve them without the help of the levy. And so it was a five-year operating levy. When in 2015, the city councils, including here, have all supported in favor of it, which were appreciative of it. And then it's five years old, expires 2020. We expect to go out for another levy at some point prior to that. So we'll come back and talk about that, on reality. I will say though, the public safety levy was for 45 cents per house. So we have yet to levy that full amount. It, it's not, so apologize. So in, the highest we've done is 37 cents per thousand. We haven't used the full amount. This coming year, it's going to be 32 cents or so. So we're not using every available piece of money because there, at the time, I don't want to use it just to use it. That's not, that's not what I do or who I am. So it's always been lower. I think that really speaks volumes to the ability of, for us to deliver the service that we promised and what we can expect of us. That's what we'll have. I just wanted to share stuff so people understand what we do, how much we do and we are here. We help, Independence, Independence helps us all the time on calls for service. So it is a partnership that we couldn't do by ourselves and it is a joint effort, it really is.
Questions for Sheriff?
I just want to take a moment and say thank you for taking the time to come in. I also want to publicly thank you. You know, we gather once a month to the mayor's, managers, commissioners and yourself, getting together at 7:00 AM when it's dark, cold and awful. And I really appreciate your engagement at a different, number of different levels. It really does make a difference. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Appreciate it.
And thanks for coming to see me.
Thank you.
All righty. I don't see anybody else jumping up for public comment tonight, so I'm going to continue moving under mayor report. Just want to remind council members that our next meeting is going to be on the fourth Tuesday. It will be at 8:30 a.m. at Central High School. This is our central high school annual meeting and the question that the invited testimony for high school seniors will be responding to, what is your vision for the future where our community, community and how do you see yourselves making it happen? So please allocate a couple of hours and we'll have interesting informational presentations. For those that haven't been there, it's a, they'll be about 200 students there. It's one of the, this will be our 14th year.
Are we inviting any other dignitaries or people of importance to show up besides us?
Students are there. Actually, Paul Evans is going to give us a legislative report and so he'll, he'll be there at that time.
Are we sending out an invite though to like our senators and representatives?
We, that's how we got Mr. Evans to be able to attend. I contacted, okay. Mr. City Manager, I think it's to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, evening. A few different things, so I'll start off on a personal note. I will be out tomorrow, the next day and Friday. I shared my mother's story with you last year, I won't do that again, but tomorrow or Thursday, she turns one hundred. And so I'm going to make that journey down to the Bay Area and help her celebrate that. Let's see, apologies in advance, I have a few pages. We haven't been a month, so I have a few things to update you on. And of course, you get our reports as well in your, in your notes, so I'll try not to be terrible and repetitive. First off, I, we've talked for a while about doing the visioning 2040 plan. We are, we are in the process of, have been invited to apply to the University of Oregon through their Sustainable Cities program and we are looking to match the cost of that, which is not as insignificant, with some grant funds that we'll be seeking as well. So we're hopeful to be able to do that. Otherwise, we budgeted separately to engage that item next year, but we think we can get a lot more money for the, by going through their program. We'll get a lot of different resources applied to the area if we, again, we've been applied, we've been invited to apply. So that's always been, it's just a question of whether we can pull together the matching resources to make this work. On a down note, and something you may be familiar with, as you know, we have been, we sold the mechanical building to Matthew, Mr. Matthew Lind and his LLC. He has fallen behind three years on property tax payments on that. We have advised him, according to your last motion on this, that we will be proceeding in foreclosure, i.e. that we gave him until this Monday to get even with the, with the tax burden and he has not done so. So our attorney has already sent in notice, so we will be taking next steps. He has his payout of finally 80 or so thousands due to the city on that note scheduled for September, but we're moving on this. That may accelerate all that then as well. So he knows that we're, you know, of course, we've been serious about this in the past. We continue to be serious and be naive and hopefully he can do what he takes to, you know, make it current. So let's see, I'm just going to kind of morph into this here a little bit. So the police department's been busy. They had a great coffee with a coffee event on Saturday, Saturday, it's last past Saturday, March 1st, excuse me, a couple Saturdays, the March 24th at Me and Cena. It was quite a turnout for that event and then in Saturdays, they're pretty heavy traffic over there anyway, so it was a really nice opportunity for them to engage the public. Police Department is also beta testing an electronic transmission of police reports to DA's office, trying to get up to, you know, get the technologies up to speed on this and avoid some of the time and taste of processing this information. They are hopeful that we'll be able to get a system formalized to roll out for the rest of the county. So again, this is sort of Independence being that test lab for these types of activities and these technologies, moving that forward. Many of you know the game is trying to expand their facilities. We're working with them on their current location. Many of you, I gather, attended a fundraiser this past week, sitting here and others, so it worked for you and they are, we have found ways to cut their costs, so we think we're going to make it a lot more reasonable for them to move forward on the project. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, I'm just going to breeze up through this, you know, pretty easily fast. Things are progressing well with the virtual situation room project, looking to incorporate pedestrian flow mapping, other words, IDO, checkpoints, et cetera, and downtown parking monitoring. So this is our partnership with an Italian firm and we will be unveiling, we were trying to get together a virtual situation room, starting on the Independence spaces, which will be the launch, the effort. So should be kind of fun. We're definitely getting a lot of recognition for that effort. We received a grant, a rural opportunity initiative grant from Business Oregon. Will be used to foster entrepreneurship and business development in the community, ties it nicely with our rural innovation capital statement, so we will have, we'll be adding additional community resources as a result of that grant to sort of bring all the to sort of bring all those efforts together. And so that's, Sean will be doing a little bit more of an overview of this at your next meeting at the high school. I think we want to give them a good tech rollout of what we're doing, so it'll be good for them, good for everybody to see a visual of what we're doing there. Also received a ten thousand dollar grant from the Ohio Valley Visitor Association to create a permanent whole county tourism position housed at Travel Salem, and this will be a collaboration between three cities in the county to add to our resources, those three sources, to make that happen. So we're trying to cement our place a little more strongly in the tourism industry, bolster and support our hotel, our new hotel, and our more active in downtown. So just the more we do there, the more we can help each other and keep that moving along. This is a really interesting project. I was always beginning to view this, working with a couple of former intel anthropologists to develop a case study of our success for the last twenty-plus years. So the study is about how we got to where we are today, and we want to use this as a learning tool for other communities, or they want to use this as a learning tool for other communities, and springboard to funding some future projects, we want to do that. So we, project should be wrapped up in June, it'll be a, I'm not sure what it would look like at the end. It's a twenty-nine thousand dollar effort because we're being essentially the test site for this, we're going to get for five thousand dollars. So it's again, former intel employees, the anthropologists that are doing this work. It should be a whole lot of fun, telling, you know, being part of something that has a story for the last twenty years, along, you know, the long road, successfully lots and lots of people will be interviewed for this, I don't know who's on that list, so, but a lot of names have come forward on that. Let's see, I just, I mentioned this last time, this Saturday, for those of you who knew Jenny Vass, her celebration of life, she passed from cancer, her celebration of life, will be at Mountain Castle on Saturday at one PM, if you have an interest in doing her. Talk about some of the development that's going on in public and private. So Independence Station, nothing to report there. City Hall, we are expecting that announcement on that lease for the brewery will have been signed this week. We're hoping that announcement's coming tomorrow. I'll let you know, I know, I have said information on to you, but we think it is with the parallel forty-five, forty-five parallel brewery, so that was good, that's who we would hope we can set it up on that. Hotel, if you look out there, you've seen that site market is well underway out there. They had a lot of them optimized this morning. We have a construction schedule, they will be very busy, and probably just stay busy until they're done. And again, we expect that opening is May of 2019. A lot of groundwork from time to date. On our public efforts, our work, Independence Landing Park, bids will be coming in shortly on that, will be done, I believe, in May to make up an award. Downtown projects, you've probably noticed the construction, the traffic control out front here on Independence, we're on Sideway. The waterline work is going in first, they've been in and out very quickly, they actually showed up early and surprised us. So we followed as quickly as we could, as notices to the public of what's going on, so we should have, we've been putting out some information on Facebook and Clear and the like. So that work will, well, our work should finish up by April 31, that's going up D Street now, they're out of Mamba for the moment, and hopefully, again, we should by the end of the month on the work, or Porsche that, they're going to come back in and do the parking lot and some other work as well. That was the page you left back a month, about a month ago. So they're moving fast, they told us, and it's reasonable to believe that they may be done by July 4th, we weren't expecting quite that a quick project, we're certainly happy for that, you know, given our last experience. Speaking of our last experience, we did settle on a plan that we had with GT Construction. We ended up, they had to pay damages to the twenty thousand for their delays, and they're done, we're done, and they're, they did good work, but it just took them long, and it should have been, and it cost us a million times. So they ended up paying another cost, a share of that bill. River View Park Concepts, open, I'm sorry, the park, the concept plan, build out houses for that, the concept unit we're developing with Greenworks, those will be April 17th at the library, and we will repeat on the second one at St. Patrick's on the 22nd. Market calendars, they've done the two very interesting options on for River View Park, that's one point. I think they were both really interesting, and really a great vision for the future of that park, not inexpensive, but you know, we have some fundraising to do in the future, but it's definitely a great vision, I think, so. Come take a look at those, again, the 17th and the 22nd, the 17th at primary, 22nd at church. Reader Board, we've accepted a little bit on that, that's ready to get in, that's ready to go, the electric is installed, and we're waiting for the Masons area, Mason area to begin to sign and design the order, and design the order on that. I think we've shared this video with you before, we are doing a stretch of walkway down Fur Park from S Street to G Street, as well as paving the parking lot there. We are starting to invest in all that, and we should be letting that work here shortly. So that's going to be a nice, real nice project, consulting with the work that the master gardeners are doing in application. Which is a great project, again, if you've never been out to Inspiration Garden at Mount Fur Park, you really need to do it, it's quite the treat. So it's a heck of an effort by those of us. Reminder again, Independence cleanup day, Zenni cleanup day, May 19th at the park. Let's see, we are, with respect to the request proposals for recruiters, that deadline is this Friday for responses, and we, the mayor, myself, and Sean Day, we're all trying to help narrow that down to a three for council presentation, probably even the first of the centrepiece in May. We'll get back to you, we'd like to bring you a couple of firms to, you can interview with. The people that we'll bring to you will clearly be qualified, it's just a question of they fit your, what you're looking for.
Those are RFPs for what?
Recruiters for the senior position.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Here's true. Let's see, you've talked about the high school meeting on the 23rd, you didn't mention, so we have also two market calendars, we'd like to get together, May 1st, first special council meeting. We'll talk more about that at the executive session, but May 1st, usual time. The following day will be executive session, however, there will be an open opportunity also to get a signature with the president, the opportunity to sort of refresh on ethics. She'll do a twenty-minute ethics training, just as a refresher. It's a good time of year because two weeks later, your SCI forms due, in case you were, just as a reminder to you, your ethics forms. Karen, do they have any information?
Yes, it's done through the state, and they should have all received notices from the state.
And is it April 15?
On April 15th, this month's date.
April 15th. April 15th, you won't be two weeks late, definitely.
Same as tax day.
So if anybody has any questions related to that, see Karen.
Please, it's here quickly. That deadline's next week.
Good, Mr. Manager.
It's actually next Sunday, so it must be Monday is the actual deadline, probably a bit of a delay on taxes. And then finally, for your calendar, another reminder, April 25th is your first budget made, so we're putting a rat on that document, so hopefully by the end of this week, you will know the next week we'll have all that looked red and ready to get the presentations ready.
Questions for the manager?
Couple.
Please do it.
We heard it suggested that we have a hotel cam mounted somewhere down by the hotel so people can watch the progress.
We actually have some conversations going on.
So, yeah, I did talk with our IT manager, he's got a camera currently doing time lapse. I think it sounded like we would be able to do maybe not full livestream video, but at least regular still shots.
Okay, so that's a good idea. And what were the times of the meetings for the River View Park open houses at the library and at St. Patrick's? Do you have that?
We don't have it completely set, but I would say probably four to seven at the library, and then the church, it's going to be after mass, so we need.
Okay. And where is the reader board going to go?
In front of the library.
At where the park, where the clock is, or someplace else, or do we know yet?
Yes, it's between, right, just past the light bulb, on that corner of the building.
Okay.
Additional questions for the manager? Thank you for your complete report, appreciate that. And then you, do you want to cover the next item?
I do. Laura, it's under the weather tonight, so if I could just, you have a report, well, actually what you have is a computer report that she received, and I believe this is the third you're running. So this is, the award for comprehensive financial reporting. If you look at the statistics, it tells you, it gives you an idea just how unique this is, and I think the statistics stood out the most for me, they're highlighted in yellow, that first one, it's highlighted, of communities of our size, only one percent of the communities in the country have received this award. So that's, that's pretty amazing. If you go down, in Oregon, we are one of seventeen percent of communities, forty-two communities in our state, and that's includes pretty much larger communities, that are primarily our communities, and only seventy percent of forty-two have received the award. And the next statistic, it's very similar, so, you know, Laura does a heck of a job keeping us on task, keeping us, you know, sometimes you feel a whip, but she's done a wonderful job getting our financial situation, you know, in great order to deploy the right now award leaders, leaders in the Almena in this region as well. So we're very proud of what she's done for us, and we think that award speaks for itself.
So on behalf of council, would you please let her know that we appreciate and cheer for her award, well, not for her award, but the collective award, but leadership is appreciated and recognized, and I know a number of other cities don't have these kind of awards, and yeah, it's a big deal, so please let her know.
I will, I'll tell her about YouTube.
Okay, sleepy. All right, moving forward, next item we have, we have some OLCC hearings. Sergeant.
I think it's you. Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. In your packets, you should have two applications, I believe we're starting with the Valkyrie Flying Tavern. That's not accurate, I can switch.
You're going the right direction.
Perfect. So Savannah Pierce has submitted an application to the OLCC to open a new establishment in the property, downtown, there's been numerous things over the last several years. She's been putting in a lot of her own money and time to renovate that building, in order to look at it as a new establishment. We're looking to have both beer, wine, as well as a few selected liquors and hard alcohol. We'll have a food service, and then maybe for lots of special events as well as, as they get some kind of feedback from patients. I'm not sure if you guys had any questions about that?
Let's just do, do people have questions about this particular application?
They're going to be both surveying, and they're also going to be selling containers.
They're going to have a retail section, but at this point, she doesn't have any plans for like growler filling the station, but it's going to be beer and wine selections that they're going to be selling for the occasion as well.
Do they have a proposed opening date?
You know, I don't know that yet. I think it's still under construction, I haven't spoken earlier specifically about that, but I'd be happy to try and find out and send you guys a message soon.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to, since you're the applicant?
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too. Would you, you want to come up?
Sure.
Is that okay? They can ask you questions.
Good evening, welcome to council. Rather than trying to go through the hoops of, if you're sitting in the back, so when do you, when do you hope to open?
As soon as possible. I'm going to bring my plans in to check tomorrow, and also submit them to the OHJ, whole county tomorrow, and I have most of my bids, et cetera, and there's not actually a ton of buildup that needs to go down over there. So yeah, just wait on those final approval things and permits, and it's all rolling and has been for some time, so.
So chances are good you'll be open by the Fourth of July?
Yes, they're good.
Additional questions for the applicant? Do you have additional staff, any additional staff? Council members, we have, we have an application, and would anybody like to suggest action? Please put ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the liquor license requested upon payment of all fees.
Second. I have a motion to second discussion, a real campus. Good? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, motion carries. Good luck, and we're looking forward to going inside of your operation.
Thank you.
Sergeant, to the next one?
The next one, Dollar General, they're currently still under construction as well. Close down on Monmouth Street, I think it's 1073. So DG Retail LLC, which is a subsidiary, holding subsidiary of DG Promotions, which operates throughout the country as Dollar General stores their retail locations, kind of, they liken themselves to like a biker, like high school pharmacy, things like that. They are requesting an application for beer and wine sales, so retail sales at those locations. They currently operate sixteen locations within a hundred miles of our city, which is what I was able to find from their website. The one thing that I think you may have noticed, or if you didn't, from my analysis of this, all of the information was gathered either through public information, available through their website or other things, as well as some conversations that I had with an employee at another location. I had just received back the requested documentation yesterday from their legal representation for background and stuff, and all the information. They did not reply to me in assembly fashion, and I made that very clear to them, but I hope that they, that wasn't how they're not part of the business. However, I don't think that I found anything with any of my searches that would make me hesitant for that operation. I think it's just a large corporate entity, and I don't believe that they work at the speed that I work, so.
I appreciate that you chastised them.
Well, I chastised their attorney. We were one of them.
Good luck. I have a question.
Yes.
Other Dollar Generals sell liquor in their other operations?
Correct, yeah. And then I was able to search police reports for the general area, I only located two reports related to anything alcohol for any of the locations within that hundred miles area, and they were people stealing alcohol from there, and another was a drug, a drug case versus chocolate products, totally unrelated to the business. And they do have surveillance systems at the other locations, I just haven't been able to see the one currently in operation, so.
Additional questions for Sergeant?
I was just curious, who filled out the application?
The attorney. Yeah.
So this is kind of how they do it in the Capitol, well, we'll have to teach them how to work at the speed of this evidence. Additional questions for staff? If someone would like to suggest action?
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license requested upon payment of all fees.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Really appreciate that you let them know that we watch that kind of stuff. Thank you very much. Additional comments from anybody? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Do you have the next one, also the summer series?
I guess so.
Like a committee of, a committee of presentation, eh?
Yeah, you should also have another one in your packet for the summer series. I believe it's just slightly different. Normally, there's two separate applications because of the number of dates. This year, there's only one, because they've got all the dates on one application. It's a very similar setup as we've had the last several years. We've worked with Alex Trevino to make changes to that, so it works out best for everyone, including the city, the local business owners, and hopefully the people to show up there.
I noticed that the, they're going to move this on to C Street?
Slightly, yeah, there's going to be, so they're going to bring food trucks in, the food trucks are going to serve the patrons of the summer series events, and they're going to be within the fenced area, so the consumption area is going to include the food trucks. They are going to close off C Street, they're going to put some tables and things out there that will allow local businesses to be able to have access to that space as well, and be able to get some patronage for the series, where people don't have to go inside if they don't want to.
Additional questions?
I just, I have one about dates.
Please do.
I see that there are only six dates that we're approving for this. Is there a reason why we're skipping the last weekend in August?
We actually made a decision to give that entire weekend to the community fiesta. Typically, what's happened is the summer series is held on Friday. Typically, what's happened is the summer series is held on Friday, and then Atlanta is coming on Saturday for the community fiesta. It's always been a little bit of a push-pull, you know, between the two different events, and so we decided to try something new and have her session again both Friday and Saturday nights.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? And somebody would like to suggest action? Don't jump at this.
I move to recommend approval of the above temporary sales license application and alcohol consumption within the designated area pending payment of all associated fees.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, everybody good? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, council. I know that we have to, and we do these, and, you know, sometimes it seems kind of rote, but other times, you know, the fact that we take a look at it does make a real difference. Before we go to the executive session, are there any council announcements that people would like to make at this time? I did that with a smile.
I know you did. I appreciate that.
Any council announcements, gentlemen, gentlemen?
May 19 is the cleanup day.
Yes.
It is also Discover My Town, which is a chamber event, and this year it is equally being promoted by the Polk County Tourism Alliance under Uncork Polk County. So there are going to be somewhere between 20 and 30 stops on Discover My Town, and the after-party is at Independence Grove.
Additional announcements? Okay. The city council will now meet in executive session to consider information and records that are exempt from disclosure pursuant to ORS 1926602F. Immediately following, the city council will meet in executive session with the purpose of consulting with the city's labor negotiator pursuant to ORS 1926602D. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. From the news media are specifically directed at reporting me into deliberations during the executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the sessions previously discussed. Decisions will be made in the executive session. It's time the council adjourned to the event center for the duration of the executive session. Once all the executive sessions adjourn, we return to open session in the council chambers. Any decisions from either executive session will be deliberated at this time. Let's take about five minutes and get to downstairs, okay? Yeah, thank you.